704. Meeting call to order. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, item number 1.1. If we can have Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening Chair, good evening community. I wanted to invite up Hendrick Knapp and Caitlin Kinney to the podium. Both Hendrick and Caitlin are youth leaders with the Altadena Foothills 4-H Club. 4-H is a US-based network of youth organizations whose mission is engaging youth to reach their fullest potential while advancing the field of youth development. Its name is a reference to the occurrence of the initial letter H four times in the organization's original motto, "Head, Heart, Hands, and Health." Through hands-on learning and positive youth adult partnerships, youth acquire knowledge and develop life skills that enable them to find and focus their energy into their passions while also giving back to their community. Altadena Foothills 4-H is a new chapter that is in its third year and is launching, it follows the school year calendar, so it gets underway in September and wraps up in May or June. 4-H is always looking for adult leaders, so if you are passionate about anything like Dungeons and Dragons, I see someone back there, woodworking, it does not have to be farming or agricultural related, I can give you the contact information of the person who runs the club up in Altadena. So I will turn it over to Hendrick and Caitlin.
Please stand for the pledge. Place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We, thank you too, we love having our youth coming in and representing. It's a wonderful way to start each of the meetings, so thanks again. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. Councilmember Jones.
Good evening. Councilmembers, please respond after I call your name. Okuri Izemi.
Excused absence.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Jennifer Lee.
She'll be about 10 minutes on her way.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Erin Cheetah.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Excused absence.
Gloria Sanica.
Present.
Antonio Bersera.
Here.
Nick Santangelo.
Here.
Regino Wilkins.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Diane Markison.
Here.
We have 13 present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item 1.3, approval of the September the 17th meeting agenda. Over to Councilmember Sutherland.
The Executive Committee met on September the 10th and approved the agenda as presented. If you haven't picked one up, there are copies of the agenda on the piano. Since then, there have been a couple of requests for changes, and let's see, oops. Down at number 6.5, instead of Cindy Cleary for the library, it will be Terry Andrus from the Board of Trustees. And as a note to council members, ordinarily, we have a fire report in the public safety reports. We don't have one this week simply because the presentation is from the Fire Department. I meant to let you all know when you got your copies of the fire report that Maria sent to us. If you have questions on them, please email them to her directly.
Oh, wait a second. Somebody from the Fire Department has a question.
We do have fire reports.
You still want to do the fire report?
Yeah, I'll do it at the bottom.
Okay, as well as the presentation, okay. So we'll add that into the...
Okay.
Okay. We was just trying to save you guys a bit of time if you already were doing a presentation, but that's fine. We'll add that back in. Any other changes? As I do know, under Community Reports, the Chamber of Commerce Report will actually be read by Councilmember Jones? For the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, yes.
Are there any other changes, additions? Councilmember, Councilmember Knapp?
The approval of the minutes is not on the agenda. We're here. It is? Why can't I? Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
I'd like to give a 30-second update, Census Track 4601.
Census Track Report?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be 8.2.
That's it. In that case, I move to accept the agenda as amended.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no? Abstained? Any abstentions? Nope, okay, so moved. Going on to the Officers' Report. We'll start with 2.1, the Chairman's Report, myself. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the councilmembers that showed up. We had the Town Hall, the ATC hosted the Town Hall meeting this last past Saturday with Senator Pontatino's office and Supervisor Catherine Barga's office, and it was an amazing success, something to be proud of. We have, it was standing room only at one point. We'd like to say thank you to the Altadena Arts Magnet for hosting it. A lot of concerned questions were answered directly with our public officials. It was, everything from Hamaunga Dam to water to homelands to short-term renters, we were actually heard from the horse's mouth rather than emails going back and forth. Being such a success, we had a different community outreach that were donated food and drinks, grocery outlet, coffee gallery. There was pretty much a member from every group in town representing as well. Huge big thank to Councilmember Knapp, who was instrumental in making it happen. These are the sort of things that makes Town Council out there with people. We had more than 50% participation from the councilmembers here, and I know it's hard some people, especially weekends, but great turnout, great response. We need to do more of them, and as many as we can go to do within the community we can, an outreach, and continue that. It's going to be a positive, positive year. We have two things coming up, the sheriff, probably will be introduced later, with the Sheriff Town Hall coming tomorrow, and then next week it is Coffee with the Captain. That's on Thursday.
That's this week.
Oh, this week, this Thursday. So tomorrow is the Town Hall, Thursday is the Coffee with the Captain, which I'm sure they'll talk about a little bit later, but I just want to make sure, if any councilmembers can, please attend, please keep going, keep making us look good, and be there for our community. Thank you. Oh, I will also mention that because, our correspondent secretary may touch on this as well, but if you are in contact with your councilmembers, and this goes to councilmembers as well, always address the email to the Town Councilmember's name at altidinatowncouncil.org. I know some of us forget, but some of us have forwarding different emails, but if you always do it to that, it will always get to the person, so. And that goes to the public, you can always reach everybody here at the table, if you put their first dot last name at altidinatowncouncil.org, you can always reach somebody. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item number 2.2, Vice Chairman's Report. Councilmember Sutherland.
It will be fairly brief, some of this you've heard before. As indicated on the agenda, public comment tonight will be actually in three places on the agenda. General public comment is item number seven, and there'll be public comment under Committee Reports. The Land Use Committee has two items that we are going to vote on tonight, and there's public comment that will be taken at both of those particular items. If you would like to make public comment, there are comment cards that are on the piano, so please complete one, bring it up and give it to one of the councilmembers at either end of the table here. If you want a response to general public comment, we don't make it during the meeting, but if you make sure that we have your contact information, then your councilmember will contact you afterwards. One other item that is not on the agenda, but I'm going to pass out or hand out a website that I just discovered this week. We all know that there's going to be a census come next year, and there's a lot of information, and a lot of people have information, but I did discover that the LA County is going to be doing outreach, and we will be receiving information directly from the county, and that particular email, or not email, but website, is censusdoc.lacounty.gov. And there's a lot of information on there. If I had seen that a couple of weeks ago, I probably would have been a little more polite to the poor census gentleman that was walking around because I didn't believe he was real. And he is actually, there is actually somebody that is coming around, and it tells you how to identify them, and yes, they are here legit. They're not counting people, but they are doing some pre-work, so that kind of, there's a lot of questions that they'll answer, but there'll be more information coming from the county, and that's their website. Dot gov.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, Recording Secretary's Report, Councilmember Jones.
Fellow councilmembers, the minutes of August 20th, 2019 were emailed to you for your review. I received minor corrections and no addition to the minutes. The minutes are, have now included the corrections, so I make a motion to accept the minutes of August 20th, 2019 in final form as presented with the addition of the corrections, so I have it.
Second.
Is there any other additions at this point? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Nay? Abstained? So moved. Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, so moved. One abstention. Okay, moving on, the Treasury Report, Councilmember Lee, she's not currently here yet, so I will, to Officers' Report 2.5, to the corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you. So I just wanted to kind of let the councilmembers know, I'm trying to be, thanks to also our Chair Billy, I'm being more diligent now on upcoming events, so you hear them during the meeting. So just a reminder again, Sheriff Alex Villanueva is tomorrow at 6:30 at the Altadena Town and Country Club, and then Thursday, the 19th, our Coffee with the Captain, Marjorie, will be at 6:30, and then it's the last chance, 9... At Coffee Gallery, thank you. And then 9:21, Farnsworth Park is the final chance, 12 noon, to give your comments on the playground project. Don't miss, I'm sure we're going to hear about the Altadena Library Board of Directors meeting, I have listed as 9:23, so if you guys see anything wrong, you can definitely send me updates or anything I should add. And our great Akona meeting will be happening 9:24, we have lots of meetings. Backing up, NBBA has a meeting, 9:21, that'll add in there, we'll hear from them. And then we are scheduling our Safe Streets Mobility meeting on 9:26, working on a fun location. So if you guys have anything you want to add, or you think shouldn't be on here, or whatever you think, please let me know. Thank you.
And if any councilmember's planning on an event coming up, make sure you let Councilmember Wong know, so we can do it. Quick question, I know that anytime there's a local event, we do ask if you can send a PDF to our corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong, so that it can be posted on our website, but I'm going to ask, I know we currently actually try to start putting things into the community calendar, is that up and going, and are the events that you mentioned on there currently?
Yes, so now I'm putting a community calendar on the community calendar page, and then any posts that come, then it's on the homepage.
Okay.
Will just be any post of the next event coming up or whatever, and that'll be in sort of an order as received, and if I get multiple posts, I'll try and put them in chronological order on the post section, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
So if you guys go there, yeah. So we have a separate calendar page now, and then posts.
Thank you. That's extremely useful, so. I encourage your councilmembers to keep an eye on that, as all the work's going in, to have a community calendar, so anything you can attend, you can check the calendar right there. We have one more report, what we just made in time, if you're ready, we have Councilmember Lee. Are you ready to do a Treasury Report? We'll come back to that, just bear with us one second. We're going to move to Public Safety Reports, item number three. So we'll start with 3.1, Californian Highway Patrol, Officer Cooper. No? Not present? So moving on to the Altadena Sheriff Station. No one here from the CHP. Item 3.2, Captain Marjorie Jacobs, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, and I will not talk about traffic, I won't even begin to start to talk about traffic. Exactly. Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the Altadena Town Council. I want to start tonight with a couple announcements, you've already made those announcements for me, but I will go down my list here. The Town Council, I'm sorry, the Town Hall meeting has been rescheduled to tomorrow, September 18th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at the Altadena Town and Country Golf Course. I will leave some flyers in the back of the room for that, if those of you are interested. I'm also hosting a Coffee with the Captain event on Thursday this week, September 19th, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at the Coffee Gallery on Lake Avenue. Should be a good event, should be a good turnout. And Altadena and Crescent Valley Sheriff Stations are also having a Tip a Cop event that's going to be at the Hill Street Cafe in Lockingout at Flint Ridge on Wednesday, October 9th, from 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM. 100% of the tips that we receive go to the Special Olympics athletes. If you're not familiar with how the event works, we dress up in our uniforms, we serve, we deliver coffee. I didn't do that in my previous job, but I'm going to give it my best shot. But it's a fun event by all, and it's really a great cause, the Special Olympics, so please attend that if you can. Also, Altadena Sheriff Station has not hosted a Citizen Academy in some time, so I'm happy to announce that we are going to have one, and more to follow. This is going to be held from September 30th, 2019, through November 18th, 2019. It's Monday evenings from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I also have flyers that I'll leave in the back of the room for those of you who are interested, the information's on there, application and whatnot, if you're interested in joining that, that group. So you're going to learn basically what our department has, our resources, how we operate, how you can be beneficial to us, and we can help you as a community. So it's a really, really good event, very informational, and I strongly encourage you to join. And lastly, on August 1st, our Community Partners Bureau, Partnership Bureau, they conducted a youth tobacco operation in Altadena, and what they do is they go to, they go to locations within the city, within the town, that sell tobacco, and they try to get them to sell to people that are not of age. And I'm very happy to announce, they went to 17 locations, and only three were in violation. So that's, that's really hats off to asking for IDs, making people show that they're of age to be able to purchase tobacco, so I'm very, very happy, especially with all the vaping and the things that are up in the news, so that's the good news. Onto the crime, I'll be brief on this. Overall, Part 1 crime for August is down 11.5%. Go through, we had one robbery that occurred at the 99-cent store, and it was basically what we call an Estes robbery, which is where somebody steals something and pushes the clerk out of the way, or a loss prevention out of the way, and they run. It's not with a weapon, it's not, you know, necessarily by an amazing force, but somebody did get pushed out of the way to complete that robbery, so we had one of those. Aggravated assaults were up slightly, they went from five to six. Three of these involved juveniles from our local group homes. They included an assault on one of my deputies, they also included assaults on staff members at the group homes, and we're dealing with that on a regular basis, talking with the folks that run the group homes, both of the two larger group homes, and trying to come up with a plan together to just slow down some of the incidents that are happening there. The kids are back in school, hopefully that's going to help, summer's over, so. There was a total of six arrests made for those aggravated assaults, so we are arresting people for those crimes. We had one domestic violence incident of aggravated assault, which was a boyfriend-girlfriend, the suspect was arrested on that. Our residential burglaries dropped from six to three, so 50% down there. Two of the suspects are possibly known to be either friends or family members of the victim, so I'm sure we're going to catch them soon. And one occurred where they entered a, unlocked garage and went into a car that was unlocked and stole some items from the car, so. We've got, crimes are down, larceny, grand petty theft. Last month, I announced that there was about 15 of these that were from unlocked vehicles out of the 21 total. We're getting better at that, so I thank you all for that, and everybody watching for locking their cars. We just, we went from 21 to 17. Five of them were grand theft from unlocked vehicles, so we still need some help in that respect in hiding your valuables. I talked with our auto theft bureau, and they're, they're across the board countywide, stolen Kias and Hyundai's are the two, two number one stolen vehicles countywide, so I thought I'd share that, in case any of you own Kias or Hyundai's, please lock them, put them in your garages. And larceny vehicle burglaries went up slightly from 11 to 13. Two of them were Eaton Canyon, obviously people out hiking, one at 24-hour fitness and two at Chaney Trail, others were throughout the town. We had, we went from five to four grand theft autos, one of the vehicles has been recovered, and we had one incident of arson, where somebody poured a substance onto a vehicle and lit it on fire, and that suspect is known to the victim, so that's going to be closed, closed case here pretty soon. And overall, total crimes are down from 55 to 51, and our arrests are up from 15 to 19 for the month of August, so when crime goes down, arrests go up, it's always a, that's a happy captain right there. So I just wanted to point out one thing that I think is important, we always talk about, you know, locking your cars, you see something, say something, but it's equally as important as if you have valuables in your home that you have insurance on, please take pictures, so as soon as you say, "I had, you know, special jewelry that was handed down from eons and eons and eons, and I have a picture right here," the next city over stops somebody and they have things in their car, it's instant that we can go over there and we can make a match. So it's very helpful, just keep those, keep those photos in a safe place, so you can share them with us if, God forsaken, you know, you lose some valuables. That's really helpful. And that's about it. If anyone has any questions from the Town Council.
Any councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Bersera?
Yeah. Hi Captain.
Hi.
So you mentioned three of the 17 were in violation, and so I just wanted to know what the consequences are for the businesses that are in violation.
They receive citations from the ABC.
Is that like a fine, or?
It's a fine. It's a fine you don't want to get.
Right.
Any other questions? I have, somebody asked me how they would go about doing a ride-along, because anybody can do a ride-along, correct? Could you tell me?
Well, not anybody.
Wow, not anybody? No, no, but could you tell me?
We have our standards.
That's what I was, let me back up, that's what I was going to say, what is the process if somebody wished to be, to do a ride-along?
We can arrange, we can arrange ride-alongs, as long as you're not, you know, a convicted felon or a mass murderer, we can do that.
And then you ride-along in a different way, like Councilmember Markison said. Yeah. They would contact the show station director?
Yeah, we can contact our Community Relations, Deputy Liberta, and we can set that up.
So Community Relations is the link, there's nothing online to look up or contact?
No.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Wilkins?
How are people still stealing cars with all the technology of key control, and are these old cars getting swept, are people taking the keys, or how does that work? I don't think you can steal a car these days.
You'd be surprised that, the amount of people that leave their key fobs in their cars. Just when we think we're ahead of the group, you know, they come up with something new. So it's a, we have a whole bureau that works on nothing but tracking stolen vehicles and operations and chop shops and all that stuff, so it's still alive and well, and we just need to be diligent.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Simmons? Okay, thank you Captain.
Thank you.
And I would like to say thank you again for supporting the event on Saturday.
Of course, I'm sorry I missed it, but my partner was there in crime, so.
The sheriff, the sheriff represented, so.
Yes, I heard it was a great event, I'm really sorry I wasn't there.
Okay, thanks a lot, moving on. Item number 3.3, Map Your Neighborhood, Karen Gibson. Hi Karen.
Johnny on the spot here, yes. Good evening, everyone, my name's Karen Gibson, and tonight I'm representing your Altadena Local Map Your Neighborhood Committee, our Disaster Preparedness Committee that is just going to town, trying to get everybody more prepared, in touch with their neighbors so that they can respond to any disaster within that first hour that is so critical to saving lives, reducing injury, and protecting property from fire and other, other damage. I've put some informational flyers at the back table for those of you who don't know Map Your Neighborhood, but the news that I'm delivering tonight is that we held a training at the Town and Country Club on Sunday, we had a nice group there, not as big as after the Ridgecrest quake, but still, it was a good group, and we hope to get another four-plus neighborhoods mapped out of that. And, you know, I just keep thinking, slow and steady wins the race, you know, that tortoise and the hare, we're just real steady, we just keep chipping away at it and trying to get neighbors prepared one block at a time. The second thing I want you to know is that the Great California Shakeout is October 17th at 10:17 AM, and this is an event, a statewide event, that helps raise awareness of disaster preparedness, and really encourages people to pay attention and take steps to get ready. But our Altadena group has been in touch with the folks who have already hosted meetings, and we're encouraging them to find a way to have a little event on their street, and so I hope you all have a plan in your community too, for some way to do that. You might do a little drill, get your helmets out, get your leather gloves, get your good shoes, put your okay or help signs right there in the window, and go to your gathering place, so that it's, you have that muscle memory, should something happen. In any case, the Altadena Map Your Neighborhood team is registered, is a registered participant with the state, and we sure hope that you will. Now, not everybody is going to be able to do an observation on the 17th, it's a weekday, that's not so easy. Some might want to go on the Saturday or Sunday before the 12th or 13th, or maybe after, it all counts, so we'd love to hear from you about what you have done, and our contact information is on the information flyer. Last thing, our next facilitator training, like we just had Sunday, will be February 9th. It's going to be kind of a, a little bit of a lull there, February 9th of 2020. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions in the council? I will say, Karen, is that, I had a family member asking me about earthquake preparedness, said they're not prepared, and we have to get all stocked up and everything else, and I said, "That's great, but you need to make sure you contact my neighborhood, because you're only as safe as the neighbors are going to be around you during that catastrophe."
That's right. And Luann Johnson, who developed the program, says the most important thing that you can do to get ready is to know your neighbors. So that's really important. But you can also put shoes under your bed tonight, and that's an important step too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, before that, I'm going to make a site message quickly, I did just receive a message that Officer Cooper couldn't make it this evening, he's been on, been placed on protective duty, he will be here next month to catch up, so. Okay, moving on, item 3.4, CERT. Deb Halberstadt. Hi Deb.
Hi, everybody. I'm Deb Halberstadt, I'm the Altadena LASD CERT I'm the Altadena LASD CERT Coordinator or Community Emergency Response Coordinator. I did make photos, Billy and all of you who were there, of the Altadena Town Council Hall, the Town Hall. So, if you want pictures, just email me, and I'll send you some, okay? I've already given them to the sheriff, so, but anybody else. I have a good picture of Billy with his bald head from the stage and everybody in front of him who were there.
I hope it wasn't too distracting.
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
Okay. Our next CERT meeting is the second Sunday, is the second Wednesday in October, in case any of you want to come. I know Jeff's been coming. I really appreciate that. So, on 9/11, we had Scott Sabers, the manager of the Disaster Services, Territory Two, from San Gabriel Valley, Pomona Chapter of the Red Cross. We talked about how sheltering, how sheltering would work in case of a disaster. He talked about being on the Woolsey Fire, Ridgecrest, and Triona experiences, and said that the Red Cross and CERT had a very good partnership. Altadena resident Joel Gay, who is also on our CERT team, spoke about disasters he's been deployed to and Red Cross Home Fire Campaign, Sound the Alarm. If you're interested in having any neighborhood canvassed for smoke alarms and COT alarms, let me know, and I'll get in touch with the Sound the Alarm campaign. August 14th, we talked about sheltering in food banks, also with Beth Gramling, who is with the Altadena Community Church. They have a food bank every Saturday between 10:00 and 12:00, if you weren't aware. And we talked about poisonous flora and fauna with representatives from the Eaton Canyon Nature Center. We had an outreach table for National Night Out on August 6th. And on July 10th, as Karen alluded to, we had an amazing meeting. Over 70 people attended. That was just after the earthquakes in Ridgecrest. The 7.1 magnitude Ridgecrest earthquake on July 5th unsettled most of us. The Community Emergency Response Team and other preparedness response groups in Altadena held a meeting July 10th to discuss how the community can help itself if a major quake strikes here. First responders spoke as one to encourage Altadinos to prepare and execute plans to self-manage most of the aftermath, because there simply will be no one else available. I've made copies for all of you on the council of one of the best, well, four pages I've ever seen. This is from the Earthquake Alliance. And you could, if you wanted to, make copies and give them to your constituencies. It's the most precise I've seen, and believe me, I've read hundreds of pages of these preparedness documents. This one's quite good. And then I also gave you an article that appeared in a recent neighborhood magazine about the 7.1 magnitude Ridgecrest earthquake, and then the resulting meeting that we had on July 10th that summarized what that meeting was about. Have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember?
Yes.
Is this available online on their website so we can send it out?
I haven't seen it in this assemblage like this. It's harder to get to on the website than I've given to you.
Okay, so we can scan it.
Is it possible, do you have it in a PDF form that we can get to the corresponding secretary so it can be placed on our website?
No.
You can scan it, okay. Okay. We'll take care of that.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Nope, that's it. Thank you. Moving on. Before we go to the next item, we're going to go back to the, our treasurer is in the house now. So, item, back to item 2.4, Treasury Report. Councilmember Lee.
The Altadena Town Council bank account is at $2,242.28. I, we run on donations here, so I am going to pass this can around, and I want to start with Billy. And hopefully, it will make its way back here that way. Thank you very much.
Privilege to be the first. Okay. Okay, we're moving on to committee reports. Item 4.1, Land Use Committee. Councilmember Marcusson.
Yes. I, first, before we get on to our items that we went over in the Land Use Committee, I wanted to let everybody know that there are housing initiatives, 2019, and there are preliminary drafts that are available, the housing ordinance that are the By Right Housing Ordinance, the Intermittent Supportive Housing Ordinance, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and the Affordable Housing Preservation Ordinance. And you can find, they're looking for comments now. If you wait until these go to the board, it's too late. So, if you're at all interested in housing in Altadena, please, by all means, go to planning.lacounty.gov, which we all go there all the time anyway, slash housing, slash, forward slash housing, forward slash initiatives. Or you can call Regional Planning at 213-974-6417 to get the information. But they're all, all the drafts are online, and it's time to start looking at them. I don't think they expect to be voting on them until beginning of next year, but they're taking comments now, so go now or forever hold your peace, I guess. Because what happens on these is that they get through, and then people get upset that they didn't know. So, now you know. Okay, at the land use meeting two weeks ago, the land use committee reviewed two projects, both of which are listed here on the agenda, and recommend approval with conditions on both of them. So, Pat, yours is listed first. Do you want to?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Marilyn? Yes.
Marilyn Warren is here to answer any questions that still may be existing. Of all of the pictures that you sent, which had, you know, possible samples of the coverings of these antennas, I made a couple copies, just of what I'm going to give you, and please share. Because I was beginning to run out of ink in my color, ink in my printer.
I did bring one copy of photosims I didn't think I needed to bring for everyone, but I can pass around.
But what I made, because there's so many of them.
Right.
Councilmembers, what you're looking at here is the first page, it's, they're all from only one direction. Rather than make copies from all directions, this is what, and if you were, say, at the post office, looking south at the building, this is what you'd be looking at. Right now, first page is right now. If you look at the second page, it's one of the potential coverings of the antennas. And the third page is another covering, which covers all of them like a big shield at any rate.
Who gets to pick that?
That'll be between the company and the planner.
Okay.
Right. But everybody wanted to know, what are the possible, and it could be something entirely different, but this is right. Am I correct?
Sure. Sure. Thank you all, members of the Town and Council. My name's Marilyn Warren. I'm with Sec Wireless, and we're representing Sprint. Sprint has put in a request to LA County to modify this existing cell site that currently has six Sprint antennas, and we're proposing to replace three of those, one in each sector, with a MIMO antenna, which is actually a shorter antenna than the existing panel antennas. So, that was our proposal, and the Design Review Committee requested that we propose some stealthing designs. So, I'll work back before you. We have a couple of options here that we've proposed that, you know, again, maybe it's not the only one. I mean, one option maybe is not to stealth at all, but again, we're here to provide you options. One design has chimney types where we are actually stealthing each individual antenna, so it looks like chimneys on top. And the other one is to take two sectors and actually make it a FRP screening-type wall, so it looks a little bit more like a wall or a parapet on top of the roof in one sector, and then similar on the other side, which is a little bit smaller, because it only has two antennas, so. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions or get your feedback.
I have a question. Did I just hear you say that one of the options is not to stealth at all?
Well, again, it's just, we don't have to stealth at all if that is a preference, but because there are some cities that don't want any stealthing. They think it's more, it creates more mass. And in this case, they aren't stealthed. So, that's, you can see what the option looks like already, basically. It would be the same as what's existing, although one of the antennas would be smaller, and three of the antennas would be smaller in each sector.
I know you didn't read your conditions, but don't we have a condition that sort of says it needs to be stealthed?
Well, if, whoops. What we could add, the way it reads is design of a decorative covering. And if one of the choices is going to be maybe no, none, then if.
Right, it's just an option. I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying it's an option to consider.
Then this would change, if used, you know, the design of the decorative covering.
I think we voted to have a decorative covering, didn't we? One of the things we wanted was a decorative covering. So, she's, she won't leave it blank if, I mean, she won't un-stealth it if we ask to have it stealthed, correct?
Correct. No, I'm just saying for you, it's an option to consider. You look at the designs proposed, and you go, "Well, nah, we don't, you know, it's too much mass, and we just prefer to have it un-stealthed."
How does the condition read?
Right. Currently, the condition reads, "Design of the decorative covering to complement the design of the office building."
Right. So, basically, what that condition is that we talked about at the land use meeting is not to, is to stealth it.
Correct. And again, I'm just, I'm just giving you options.
I don't want anybody to be confused. We're asking, the land use committee is recommending that we ask the Regional Planning Commission to approve with stealth, with conditions, one of which is to stealth it.
Yes.
Okay. Let's just be clear. I just don't want people to be confused.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sylvia has one.
What's that? You have one?
Covering question?
Would it be something?
Never mind.
The first page is what it looks like now?
Yes. Okay. With no stealth.
I think.
Or covering.
I think the condition, and again, I'm just working from memory, but it did read something like compatible with the existing rooftop design, so I don't know if it actually had stealth. And again, we're happy to do it. I'm just trying to be clear, I think, on what the direction was, but you might want to check that condition just to see how it read.
On the prior.
Same thing. You're talking about the previous company?
Yeah.
It was the same wording, exactly.
Okay.
Right.
And their, I think their proposal was more aligned with this one.
Yes. Right, right, right. But it could also be a combination, so it doesn't look like just a whole bunch of chimneys.
It's the same planner, correct? It's working on both of them.
Same planner, yes, same planner.
You know, the planner.
Who wants to coordinate the whole thing?
Right. The planner wants to coordinate.
Already done.
You say that it is to be ordered.
That's the way it's being done. Yeah. Right.
But I just didn't want anybody to be confused about not doing anything, because we said.
Because it hadn't been mentioned before, and in my talks with the planner, it was not, it was not under discussion.
The county wants it camouflaged.
County wants it camouflaged, yes.
Okay. Okay.
My only question is, when you look at the stealthing between the second and third page, the first one looks like chimneys, the next one, you may have a neighbor whose view is blocked completely by that whole big square covering or six, you know. And you were just mentioning earlier, who has the say of what kind of stealthing it is? That's LA County and Sprint? Does the community have a say on what kind of stealth at that point?
Pat's going to talk to the planner.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're here for, rather than, and these are all the, the possibility may be something that's not this, but it still needs to conform to.
I think the county is going to take your recommendation, because they want you to be happy with whatever we, you know, take further. They want you to be in support of it. So, I think it's just whatever you feel is appropriate.
I think, let me, let me just say this, if you will. When we approved the last one.
Right.
That was a chimney-style camouflage, right?
Right, right.
And if, who's the planner on this? Do you remember?
Julie.
Okay. So, if, you know, if she's keeping it standard across both projects, then I think what you just ought to do is talk to her and say, you know, what's your plan? Because there's also, is it going to look like a, is it going to look like brick, or is it going to look like stucco? Or is it going, right, there's a whole thing that's going on. So, and that's all driven by the county, but you can coordinate with them and say.
This is the first time we've seen, by the way, guys, that one of the things that we're seeing on these pictures is that on the top of the building, which is the strip mall that's at Lake and Caliberas, that there's a section of that that has a whole bunch of, I don't know if you've even noticed, has a whole bunch of short cell phone towers there. They're updating all of them. And so, the other company that we had come in, was it Verizon? Came in, showed us pictures of how they were going to cover that up. And how they do it is really, we just want it to look better than it looks today and have it look less cellphone-ish, kind of, cell tower, I guess, ish. And so, I think you just need to make sure. What we've, what we've seen today from Sprint, right, is that they have an idea, which is to put a big box around all of them, which then raises the roof line, and that's what we're worried about, people that may not be appreciative of that, is what we're, what we're thinking about, so. And her concern also, Jolie's, the planner's concern, is that if they all look absolutely exactly the same, then that could also look kind of, you know, boring, too.
Yeah.
So, but they still need to coordinate, so however they can put that together, which I would, I would guess might eliminate the one that looks like the big screen.
Yeah, if you can, if, you know what, Pat, will you? You have your conditions. Well, we need to move on, and you can read your conditions, and we can do public, take public comment, all that. But if you would make sure to coordinate with Jolie, and when they have a decision, ask them to let us know.
Yes.
And then we'll come back with it, tell everybody to let them know what that is.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilmember.
Is this, are they, are these the only two providers that are on this particular property? Is another provider going to come back, and we're going to be looking at this again?
I think AT&amp;T's up there, too.
Okay. It seems like there might be one more, but I'm, but I'm.
I'm not 100% sure. I know Verizon's out there, and I honestly, I don't know.
Okay. I think AT&amp;T's up there, too.
So, I'd guess anticipating.
We're in, yeah, yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't.
No, but I'm just anticipating that how it's all going to look is going to look like something. But I don't know if the other one is there. We don't know when that one, at the moment, when it's going to come up for renewal, so.
Right, okay. So, if, Billy, do you want to do public comment now, or do you want to do a motion now? What do you want to do?
I'd just do public comments now.
Okay.
If there's any public comments.
So far, none.
So far, we have no public comments on this particular action item.
Okay.
So, we'll move on.
So, do you want to do a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm just trying to move us along.
Yes, all right. Let's see. In the matter of, in the matter of project number 2019002582, CUPR PPL 2019004640. Project located at 2235 North Lake Avenue to replace three rooftop antennas. I recommend we send this request to the Altadena Town, oh, we are the Town Council. I'm thinking two weeks ago. Oh, gee. Send a letter to Regional Planning with a request for approval with the following conditions. Work on the project is to be done during business hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Compliance with all federal and state guidelines to include FCC standards for radio frequency and the design of the decorative covering to complement the design of the office building. Do I have a second? Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.[1756.16]
All those opposed say nay. Uh, any abstentions? Two, three, three abstentions. So moved.
Okay. So we'll send a letter down, recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the next project that we have, Billy, you, will you present this one?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the, this is in the matter of a notice for filing of an application for state retailer's license for the sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption and auxiliary offsite consumption in conjunction with an existing restaurant. The list of conditions was sent out to all council members and was available at land use two weeks ago. If anybody doesn't have, I have extra copies here, so you can look through as we're discussing this. Yeah, I'll pass a couple this way. You should all have a copy, but if you don't, there's extra ones here. We can just, let us know and we'll pass them down.
Did you have any to send it?
Um, everybody before land use, it was before land use. It was sent out to everybody for land, before land use. And then everybody at land use received a copy here two weeks ago. Okay, um, this is for a restaurant called Bulgari's at the address of 749 East Altadena Drive. That's project number 2019000060, permit number RPPL 2019000121. I would like to say that we, the area was canvassed and outreach was done in the neighborhood to a considerable amount. I'd like to thank councilmember Knapp, councilmember Simmons, land use committee members Daniel Harlow and Doug Cauliflower for making everything happen. It was absolutely an incredible effort. The results of that survey, 172 people and facilities and businesses were reached out of that, within a thousand-foot radius of the existing property. Forty-eight of those who were reached approved, was in, was in approval of the, the beer and wine application. There was zero opposition. There was 11 neutrals, and we received four emails, all in favor, which we assume came from the outreach, because those that weren't obtainable were left flyers with information on how to reach us. So it was a considerable effort, and the results speak for themselves. So, in this, I'll read the conditions, and then should we do public comments before or after? Before?
I would say after.
After, okay. I'll read the conditions, I will say, I will do the motion right now, and then we'll, we'll do public comments before we actually vote. In the matter of the project number 201900060, permit number RPPL 2019000121, we would like to make a motion for the ATC committee to send a recommendation of approval to the Los Angeles County Planning with the following conditions. Now, all these conditions are based on existing alcohol CUPs for localized restaurants within the area and offsite, offsite permits as well, conditions that are already in existence. Some of these are standard to alcohol sales, and some, again, I said, are comparative to existing permits. So number one, the sale of alcohol beverages shall be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM from Sunday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. No alcohol shall be served at the site beyond 10:00 PM from Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Any unfinished serving already being consumed at the time shall be consumed within 60 minutes of the latest permitted time to serve alcohol at that site. Two, security cameras shall be installed inside the restaurant and outside facing the outdoor dining area and surrounding areas. Video should, shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Let me just move, uh, three, a monitored security alarm shall be installed on premises. Four, the permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcohol beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structures. Five, all regulations of the State of California prohibiting the sale of alcohol beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. Six, the permittee shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxi cab companies at or near the cashier, or similar public service areas such as telephone numbers shall be visible by and available to the general public. Seven, there should be no consumption of alcohol beverages outside the designated areas of the subject facility. The permittee shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcohol beverages regarding this restriction. Eight, the permittee shall develop and implement a designated driver program, such as a free soft drink or a coffee to a designated driver of a group. The permittee shall submit the program to the director of planning for approval prior to the approval of the CUP. All employees shall be trained on the program. A printed two-sided card explaining the program shall be placed on all tables at the restaurant, or on a notice regarding the program shall be printed on the menu. Nine, all servers of the alcohol beverages shall be at least 18 years of age. Ten, no dancing or dance floor is authorized in or outside the premises. Eleven, there should be no music or other noise audible beyond the restaurant premises. The restaurant should comply with all LA County Noise Ordinance provisions. Twelve, not less than 51% of the income from the business enterprise shall be derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. The business owners shall at all times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sale of food and the gross sale of alcohol beverages. Said records shall be available to the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning, the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on Demand. Thirteen, the permittee may hold happy hour drink specials or similar promotions from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM seven days a week, only in conjunction with food. Fourteen, food service should be continuously provided during operating hours. Fifteen, no service of alcohol drinks will be done in disposable cups of any type. Sixteen, the outdoor seating area should be clearly defined and follow all ABC rules for outdoor areas. Seventeen, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and emptied regularly. Eighteen, there should be no display of alcohol beverages from coolers or refrigeration. Nineteen, there should be no sale of alcohol from an ice tub. Champagne buckets are exempt from the onsite consumption. Twenty, the permittee and all managers and designated employees of the establishment who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcohol beverages shall participate in the LEED, which is the Licensed Education on Alcohol and Drugs Program. All new designated employees will be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or plaque in a public, publicly accessible area of the establishment, such as the lobby, indicated they have participated in the program. Proof of the completion of the facility training program by employees, the licensee and all managers shall be available upon request. Twenty-one, alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption shall be sold to consumers only when food is ordered and consumed. Twenty-two, now this one is the following shall apply to any alcohol sales for offsite consumption. A, alcohol, beer, and wine shall be sold for offsite consumption, only, beer and wine shall be sold for offsite consumption. B, all sales for offsite consumption must be with food. C, there should be no wine, with the exception of wine coolers, sold in containers of less than 375 milliliters. Wine coolers shall not be sold in less than four-pack quantities. E, malt beverages, for example, beer, ale, stout, and malt liquors shall not be sold in a bottle or container greater than 750 milliliters or 25.4 ounces. F, no miniatures of any type may be sold. All beverages must be sold unopened and in original manufacturer container. H, beer in containers of 16 ounces or less shall not be sold by single containers, but must be sold in manufacturers' prepackaged multi-unit quantities. I, alcohol sold for offsite consumption may not be consumed onsite. J, staff shall not open any alcohol sold for offsite consumption. That's the list of conditions. I would ask, is there anybody from Bulgari's here this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Should we invite them up before we go further?
Do you need a second? Did you make a motion about it?
Do I make a motion right now? Before we go?
I don't know.
That's my motion, I made a motion, yeah.
Didn't just make a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
A second.
Second? Okay.
Jeff did.
All right.
So, we can have discussion on the item, but I don't know, you know, we've reviewed this project a number of times, so maybe we should go to public comment and see...
There is no.
No public comment, okay. So, we can, I don't think we need any other information correctly, correct from them?
Well, there was a couple of questions that they had regarding these items at the, at the land use.
Who's "they"?
Bulgari's. Unless you wanted to go further, there was an issue...
No, he's, he says he's fine.
It's all good right now? Okay, okay, all right, so, okay.
We worked hard, we worked...
Okay, yes, we did, I just wanted to make sure that...
We worked really hard on this one, so, and we coordinated with the applicant, everything.
So there are no more public comments?
No.
Are there any questions from the...
Any questions from the council members?
From the council? Is there, are there any questions from the council about the project?
Yes.
Council member one?
Yes, I just, I just need a reminder, item 19, I forgot why we said alcohol from an ice tub champagne bucket.
Okay. When you do, if you do a huge, big banquet facilities or something like that, they, they have these big tubs, and they'll ice them all down, and they'll have them on the patio or somewhere else, so it becomes a different function than a restaurant. However, if you, if you're at the table and you order a bottle of wine, or you order a bottle of champagne, that typically comes in an ice champagne bucket. And so that's why we put in there, one, not to go to the other format, but as a restaurant format with ice buckets to ice the wine down for individual tables, that's, that's appropriate.
So, item 18, I thought the original plan shown indicated that there would be, you know, a dedicated refrigerator for, for beverages.
Uh, one of the things...
And I'm wondering why that could not be visible.
Oh, you know, there'll be, one of the things that we actually, actually isn't worded in here, and that was, that's a good point, on, on this one I'm reading, is that we did have a discussion about an industrial wine cooler was, was exempt.
Well, I'm thinking more of a, just a glass front refrigerator.
Other than restaurant-style coolers.
Yeah, that's how we did that.
Yes, it was other than restaurant-style coolers, so if we can put that...
That didn't make it into this evidently.
That's because I think you have the version before the meeting, and that came up at the meeting.
Other than...
It's not on here either.
Oh, it's not on there either?
It's not in here either.
Oh.
So I think, I mean, you know, a, a clear-front refrigerator that's visible to people, you know, at an inside counter should be just fine.
Well, this comes off of the same conditions that applies to permits existing right now. So Aldi's does not have a permit to allow them to have a cooler...
Correct.
...with alcohol sales of beer and wine. So what we're saying is we're restricting businesses currently under a certain permit requirement, but we're gonna allow somebody else.
What about Rite Aid with their refrigerator?
Their grandfathered in from a long time ago. That's a difference, because that comes under, yeah.
Their CUP was a long time ago.
Okay, it seems overly restrictive.
Well, when, I keep saying to you guys, when Bulgari's is really, really, really successful, because now they're gonna be selling fancy dinner and fancy wine, and their own wine and everything else, and they decide that's not a big enough place, and they move out, this CUP stays with the, with the building. So, we always, always, always try to think ahead, and, you know, our biggest concern right now is the six alcohol CUPs that we approved for the marketplace, and not knowing what happened with that now, that they're not opening. So, it's always a balancing act that we have to do, about making sure, and the Bulgari's folks are fine with everything that we've talked to them about, and so, that's the most important thing right now, and then also to protect the, the community from future...
It is also my understanding with this particular business and with it being a restaurant, and the offsite sales is not, they're not asking for a permit for offsite sales, so you have a cooler and you come and grab and go like a liquor store.
Right.
It's to sell in conjunction with food. They want to, they want to par wines with food, and they're importing them currently from Italy, and it's, it's actually part of a meal process, is what they're supplying for offsite consumption. It's not like a liquor store style.
I understand, I understand. I read their original material.
On number four, it says, "The permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages," but then on number 13, it says, "A permittee may hold a happy hour drink specials."
Mm-huh.
Yes.
So, or similar promotions. How is that not advertised? What, I didn't, I don't understand.
The advertising, the advertising that we're talking about is putting beer, beer, beer on the outside of the building, or big signs that say, "Get your beer here," and, but advertise, I'm sure they'll put something out that says that they, or on their website that says, "We have a happy hour from 4:00 to 7:00." That's not, it's advertising an event, not that you have liquor to sell.
They're perfectly able to take an ad out, or do social media, or do anything they want to promote their business, and they have the right to do so. And happy hour is part of that promotion outside, but they can't promote the, the sale of alcohol on the structure itself, and that comes from an existing one. And their promotion for happy hour, we're not talking about alcohol, we're talking about food and alcohol.
Right.
This is a restaurant. So happy hour would probably, it, we're talking about half-priced foods and things like this. It's not about promoting the sale of alcohol, it's about promoting the restaurant and the use as a restaurant.
It's not a bar.
Okay.
So there is a difference between the two.
Right. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, you wanna take a vote?
Okay, are we ready to vote?
One last question, as always. No dancing, dance floor, I, I don't, is this a clear enough condition? No dancing or dance floors authorized in or outside the premises? Do we, there a line?
How would you be more, how would you be more clear?
Well, that is also in there, because that is currently on...
No, it says no dancing inside the premise or outside, you can't stand up and start dancing.
Yeah.
It's a violation.
We report you to Regional Planning if you stand up and dance.
It is, it is a small facility, and most likely the place, if you were to put, suddenly put dancing and bands of music there...
Right.
Would appropriately, most likely be for the business, and I'm just gonna throw it out there, I, I'm not confirming anything, would be the exterior patio, and the noise and the sound would, would, would carry over to the neighbors behind, and it would obstruct the businesses in front as well.
Correct.
So...
Does it need to be worded any clearer, or is...
I think that's what we, I think that's what we ordinarily put.
Yeah, that's the standard.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I know. That's right. The wine?
Any other questions? Okay, all right, then we go to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. Any abstentions? One abstention. So moved.
Okay. Send the letter out.
Congratulations, good luck with the next part of the process.
We expect an invite to the opening party.
And, and, and again, I, I...
Hey, 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 you guys, we have an ethical standard, yes.
I, I also, I also want to make a comment is that...
That we need to adhere to.
I also want to make a comment that any business, any business that is trying to be in town, and is working really hard to work with the town council and the land use committee, and, and accepting of our hard work and efforts in trying to work with the community, should be also supportive as well. So, you know, everything goes through clear, and make sure we support our local businesses as well, and thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, does land use committee chair have anything else to report from the land use?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Well, New York Drive is, is, it's, it's, the blacktop is down, I know that's the old, asphalt, sorry, the asphalt is, is down on New York Drive, and it looks to me like it's striped at the Allen End, it's still closed off, though, so, but it's the, the hard, all the hard work is done on New York between Allen and Hill by now. Not without a lot of drama, but, so that's really good, so they'll be moving on to the next section, and I will, there is a, of course, I don't have my sheet with me that has the website on it, but the, you can go and check on Department of Public Works, I think, on the Altadena, New York Drive, and see what the, the latest status is. Yeah.
I just wanted to make someone aware that the, the way that they joined the newly paved part of the middle of New York Drive and Allen, so the middle between all of the crosswalks to the existing Allen Avenue going north and south, there's probably a four-inch grade problem. So you hit and go over to get up, if you're going down the street, and you hit, it's like a...
Is that on the south side of the...
It's on both sides, it's on north and south, because I just went through there today, and so there's, it's not...
Well, I came that way, and I don't remember making a right-hand turn that I went through any, it's still, if it's not right, they are still working on it, yeah.
Okay, got it.
They're still working on it. Because there's also some cement that's out of whack, and I'm sure they're still working on the corner.
Yeah.
So, that's the latest.
All right, moving on, item four point two, Safe Streets Committee with council member one.
Uh, thank you, so, um, again, a reminder, we're going to have a meeting at the end of this month, Thursday, six o'clock, but meanwhile, so if you want to get involved, just let me know, you can reach out, Dorothy Wong, Altadena Town Council, Dorothy dot Wong. And so, um, in amazing partnerships, so with the Safe Streets Committee, it's been an evolution and still evolving with safe routes to schools and all kinds of different stuff, the library, we did a bike park, and then with council member Jones, with our hidden voices of Altadena. So now the Safe Streets Committee is partnering with Altadena for Clean Healthy Air, Altadena Heritage, and Altadena Libraries, and Joy will maybe be speaking on it also during a comment with more details. So we're actually going to host arguably the first formalized version of the Altadena Clean Air Day in collaboration with California Clean Air Day, and so Joy will tell you more about that. That will be October fifth from four to six P.M. at the Altadena Main Library, and we're going to have all kinds of great activities. So the Safe Streets Committee is involved in ways that people think about how they move around, biking, walking, scooting, maybe, maybe not, but all the different ways that you can get around. So we will have some electric bikes there that you can learn about, since we go uphill here in Altadena a lot, sometimes pedaling can be difficult for people. So, anyway, you'll learn more from Joy, and then I just had a fun exercise, council members, fellow council members, if you'd like to partake. California Clean Air Day is asking all Altidinos to take the Clean Air Day, the Clean Air Pledge, and so in this, there was a great little resolution that the Altadena Town Council, if we would like to do this, I think it would be kind of fun just to support California Clean Air Day in the town of Altadena. So I just kind of took their template and just kind of worded a couple of things, and it would just be, and I probably could have removed a couple, and Diane's sighing already.
No, no, I'm, I'm, because I have a pile of paper and I have to try to, and I have to try to find it.
It's okay. So, um, should I read this, or?
Sure.
So just, uh, this motion would be really a nice way for Altadena to be recognizing our need for, and air has been not as clean as today, and still we have work to do for clean air. So, whereas air pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer, heart, and lung disease, which adversely affects health, and whereas California has some of the most polluted regions in the United States, and whereas Altadena is committed to the health of our residents, workforce, visitors, and community at large, whereas it is vital that we work together to protect the wealth and well-being of our residents, visitors, workforce, and where emissions from vehicles, industry, and even household sources significantly affect the natural environment, air quality, and well-being of residents, employees, and visitors of Altadena, so I don't know if employees tracks there, whereas individual actions such as walking, biking, using transit to go to work and school, carpooling, and conserving energy can directly improve air quality in our region, and whereas everyone can play a role, whereas education about air quality can raise community awareness, encourage our community to develop better habits, and improve our community's health, and whereas Californians will be joining together across the state on Clean the Air Day on October second, 2019, and now therefore it can be resolved by the Altadena Town Council that October second be declared Altadena Clean Air Day, with a celebration to follow on October the fifth from four to six P.M. at the Altadena Library, whoops, from four to six P.M., and be further resolved that we encourage all of our residents, businesses, and community members to participate in the Clean Air Pledge, also community organization. So I know Altadena Heritage has also been doing it, Altadena Clean Healthy Air, Altadena Safe Streets, Altadena Library maybe is also working on the Clean Air Pledge, and we can all do it, CleanAirDay.org, help clean the air for all Californians. What say you, Altadena Town Council?
Any questions from anyone? Uh, I, I just, so basically, what, you're requesting the council, um, vote or, or motion to support the, the Clean Air Day.
Yes.
So, so they're asking for the council to join on that.
Yes.
So it's actually one particular day, and that we pledge that during that day, for that day, um, we follow the, uh, the obligations of trying to, to support the clean air for that day personally, and if you have the opportunity to support others, to sign up.
Yes, and then celebrate with us on October fifth.
With a celebration at the library.
And it, I'm sorry, is, October second is the date for, well, state of California?
Yes. Everyone taking action.
So also join in a state, a, a, a state initiative as well?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's clear so everyone knows what they're-
I think you should add on there, um, if you smoke, you just make a commitment on that day not to smoke, all day.
Love it.
And, um, and also those vapor things.
I, I would, I, I would actually agree with that, except as an, as a ex-smoker who actually supports non-smoking like crazy now, especially for clean air and my daughter, I do know what kind of restrictions that's going to put on a smoker who is smoking through through the fact that it's addictive, not through the fact that they're trying to cause bad air. So that is something to consider.
But they can try.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can try. Well, I'm going to assume if you make the pledge, you're, you're saying you're going to try, right?
I think it's a little too specific.
Too personal.
Right.
So we all take our pledge to make a difference.
Okay.
So you can pledge as an individual, you can pledge as an organization.
So what you're asking, are you, uh, a motion? Are you making a motion?
Yes, I motion.
Okay, you put a motion on the table, a second?
The Altadena Town Council's support.
Second from council member Wilkins?
I'll put it here.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor say nay? And opposed? Okay.
No, abstain.
Abstain, abstain.
Abstentions.
It was not very clear as to what we were voting on, sorry.
Okay, so Jeff's abstaining.
Okay.
You're not abstaining today? Okay.
No.
All right.
So I'm moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item four point three, Education Committee, council member Lee.
The Altadena Town Council Education Committee does have a report tonight, just an announcement, two announcements. We have a Realtor workshop coming up, it's not us, it's P U S, or, or-
P four.
What? P four? Okay, yeah. We put together this really great flyer of the public schools in Altadena, and I don't have one with me, but I'll send it to you, it is fantastic, and we're going to be giving those out, and we're going to be spreading them around town, so that every Realtor has a flyer that has every single one of our public schools and a description and the PTA It was a Sylvia Vega idea, and it's expanded.
Excellent.
It's a really excellent. Next month I'll bring the copies in. So there is a conference at the John Muir High School Library on September twenty-eighth, which is a Saturday, nine-thirty in the morning to three P.M. It's free. It is called Why We Choose PUSD Public Schools. I don't have a poster for that either, because we are finalizing some of these speakers. This one-day conference will speak on topics such as upcoming school bond measures, housing costs in our area, and public school enrollment. There's a lot of information out there on Nextdoor about bond issues, there's a couple of them out there, there's a lot of questions, a lot of people are talking. This is the place to get your questions answered, and it's going to be interesting, and you'll get a lunch, and it's free, and it's at John Muir High School. I will send out the flyers to all of you, and we'll put it on the website. September twenty-eighth, nine-thirty to three-thirty.
At Muir?
At Muir.
What's the event called?
Why We Choose PUSD Schools.
Can you send the info to Dorothy so she can close it?
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that kind of, is that over, nine-thirty to three-thirty, you said?
Yes.
That's over a six-hour gap. Is that, is that kind of a pop-in during that time, or is it an event that's going to last the six hours if you have an interest, you want to be there for the whole thing?
If you have an interest, you want to be here for the whole thing, because it is designed so that there's a keynote to do an intro, general introduction, and then there are these sessions throughout the day with the lunch break, and we will have a speaker at the lunch break, and it's designed to take you through all of the issues that we're going through with public schools in PUSD, which are pretty big issues right now, and you will be a well-informed voter when these things come up on the ballot. So if you want to pop in, that's great, I understand, you know, people have to work and they have obligations, but if you can carve out the time, I think it will be well worth your while.
Especially if you have kids in school age.
Especially if you have kids in school age.
Okay. Um, thank you, Annie. Okay, moving on, we're going to special presentations, item number five, five point one, um, the Assistant Fire Chief Anderson Mackey? Mackey, I'm sorry, I apologize. Presentation Planning for the Future.
Okay, good evening, Chairman Malone and Town Council. If you like, I can kind of go through our activity report, it'll take a quick second, okay? Okay, for the month of August, we had a total of three hundred and sixty-one responses, seven fires, two hundred and ninety-five medical calls, eleven service calls, eight hazardous condition calls, and forty good intent calls. Had a total of two hundred and ninety-five persons that were, were seen by paramedics, two hundred and sixteen of them were transported, ninety-three by paramedics, and a hundred and twenty-three by EMT ambulance. So the seven fire calls, we did have one accidental fire on Raymond, you can see the fencing and the vines come fire, barbecue was a little too close to that area. Another small fireage in a, fire in a storage closet caused by household chemicals, so that, that does happen, so it'd be, if you have any questions about how to store your, your household chemicals, please stop by your fire station and they could give you some tips on how to properly store your household items. Another fire that was a good intent call on, on Olive, another fire, wires down, pole caught fire, but no real damage on Coolidge. The other two were vehicle fires and one cooking fire. And we can see, we had seven traffic collisions, the ones that I pay close attention to are the pedestrians, vehicle versus pedestrian. That is the, that concludes the report for August, are there any questions?
Um, any question about you? We were just actually looking on, on the report, and it was talking about an accidental fire from barbecue being too close to combustibles, vines and fencing. Is that something that's a concern, is that something that's quite common?
Uh, no, that's a, that's the first I've seen, I've been doing this for quite some time, and the first time I've seen a barbecue. Usually we get a, a scare from a, smoke from a barbecue where we send tons of resources there, but it's usually just a barbecue, but that's-
What about the fire pits that's quite common these days?
The fire pits, I haven't had any, seen any responses from the fire pits, being too close to any fences, usually you want to have some type of clearance between the fire pits. I have one of those up by myself at, at home, and it's, it's portable, so you can move it around, so it's definitely away from any combustible, so I definitely recommend that to, to anybody who has a, a fire pit.
I also noticed that in, in our community, because there's so many trees, that the, the canopies of the trees often go over people's patios, so that probably is a concern when you have fire pits and-
We want to make sure we clear, yeah, clear any, you know, overhanging trees or branches or leaves or anything from yours, especially if you're going to have a barbecue or a fire pit, so I definitely recommend that.
Well, it's good to see it's not an issue, and I saw that, we were like, maybe that's something we should, but-
No, I, I saw that too.
People are attentive, so that's good.
Yeah, but we did put it out, so that's, that's our main job, so.
Thank you. Any, any questions regarding the fire report? Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to the presentation.
Okay, so I did hand out some survey cards along with another flyer, and we have some in the back also, so, I'm here, once again, I'm your assistant, local assistant fire chief, I am a resident of Altadena, and the assistant here, Aubrey Mahan, Manahan, Manahan is here to assist with any, any questions, so, what I wanted to do was share with you some of the challenges that your local fire department is, is having right now, so with that, we're coming out and we're speaking to the community, just want to get your input on things that are important to, to you regarding your local fire department, so, um, once again, our local firefighters are, they're professionals, they fight fires, structured fires, wildland fires, and respond to major disasters. So with the LA County Fire Department, they're one of two fire departments in the nation, along with Fairfax County, Virginia, that can respond, internationally respond, use our task force, so this, earlier this month, we did respond a, a team of sixteen to North Carolina to assist with Hurricane Dorian, and we had a team of fifty-eight that were on alert to respond to the Bahamas. They were later, um, the alert came down to just stand by, and so they didn't respond, but we, we do respond internationally, so, to the, to Japan, to Haiti, Oklahoma for the bombings, so it's, uh, you, you do have one of the finest departments here in, in the city.
Were they called upon by Brazil for the recent Amazon fires? We said internationally you get requests, I just, just curious.
So, no, we didn't get responded to Brazil, but I, I know, um, it's, it's, a lot of our responses through FEMA, so if they would have called us to, the, the big thing about those wildfires, we could send maybe a, a small group of people, but not the task force, because we, we travel with a lot of equipment, and with wildfires, you're going to need fire agents, so, hopefully that answered that question.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, once again, we do respond to just about anything out there, including emergency medical calls, earthquakes and other disastrous floods, you know, we do respond to those. So with our nine-eleven emergency calls on the rise, so, uh, these are some of the things that are, are concerning us. This is our fifty-year anniversary of the paramedic program, so prior to nineteen sixty-nine, there was not a paramedic program in the county of Los Angeles, so I'm sure mostly you remember, there's not a lot of young people here, but everybody remembers emergency, right? You guys remember the name of those medics?
Oh, yes.
Johnny and Roy, right? Okay. Johnny Gage, Roy DeSoto. So, um, anyway, from that program, we, uh, we kind of set the mark for a lot of fire departments to kind of mimic what we're doing, so when you go to most other cities, they do have firefighter paramedics, we were one of the first. So, um, today, about eighty-four percent of our calls are emergency medical calls, so, and those calls have, uh, include heart attacks, strokes, seizures, allergic reactions, so I can speak to, being a thirty-one member of the department and going through the ranks, I can remember one that was kind of close to me, which was responding to a, a patient who had a dissecting aortic aneurysm, if you know what that is, it's pretty painful if you ever had one and survived, it's, you're, you're in the, you're on the good side, so. We were able to respond, provide medication, getting you on oxygen, IV, contact at the, the local hospital, which was Cedars, back then we had a, a big radio, was about the size of this, this plexiglass here, and much heavier. I was able to utilize that, call the hospital, get the medication, let the doctors know what exactly you're going to be getting in the next couple of minutes, so, got the patient loaded up, he went straight to the O.R., and two weeks later, on that day, he came to our fire station knocking on the side door, just thanking us for saving his life, so without that, us being that quick to rescue him, he probably wouldn't have made it, so that was probably one of the more satisfying moments for me as a firefighter. So that was probably one of the more satisfying moments for me as a firefighter. So moving along, so to keep place with, to keep pace with these increased medical calls, once again, the, the calls have increased 50% and our staffing levels and our paramedics squads have kind of stayed the same with only increase of about 5%. So locally, you do have a paramedic unit at Station 11. And Station 12, there's not a paramedic unit, but most of the firefighters, at least the captain and engineers were prior paramedics. So you do have that safety net for, for the citizens of Altadena. So even though we are short on squads, we work hard to keep our response times down and do good work while we have. But what we need from you and the community is to, we understand what your priorities are, so we can probably increase that. It'd be nice to have more paramedic squads out there when yours goes on a call than we have another squad coming in from another area. But if we had more in the district, it'd be more, just be better for the community, I believe. So in addition to the paramedic squads, our communication systems is approaching the 30-year mark. So when I came on, we just built our brand-new state-of-the-art communications center. And now it's starting to pass us by. So we want to update a lot of the things that we have. So a lot of our communications and technology, our radios are, are approaching their, their lifespan. So at the end of this year, Motorola is no longer going to replace all the parts because they're so old. So we utilize those radios to talk with other agencies during large wildland, fast-moving brush fires. So every agency, whether it be Pasadena, South Pasadena, LA City Fire, and A&amp;F, we all share a, a common network, but the systems are starting to be upgraded. So no longer the, a lot of the digital and wireless systems, our radios aren't as capable as they could be. So those are some of the things we want to make sure that we share with you and get your input on some of the, on the survey and what's important to you. So another thing that we're looking at is protecting our, protecting and rescuing our vulnerable citizens. So most of those are usually the senior, the seniors and, and small children. So we want to make sure that we have the latest equipment such as our Jaws of Life. You've all heard of that, correct?
Yeah.
Jaws of Life. So those are, help rescue, trap vic, trap patients in, in vehicles. So when I came on, and I keep saying when I came on, it's been a long time ago, but when I came on, those, those Jaws of Life were weighed about 40 to 50 pounds. So now they're much lighter, much similar to what you, a piece of tool that you would buy at Home Depot, which is cordless. So those are a lot lighter, much more maneuverable, and we have backup batteries. So you don't have to worry about a line, hydraulic line failing. An updated Jaws of Life tool would be great to update our defibrillators, our medical defibrillators, rescue equipment. And some of our most important thing I would like to, like to have is a thermal imaging camera on every piece of equipment. So the thermal imaging camera is a, a camera that is held by the, the entry team that's going into a burning building. So within, with that camera, you're able to see the outline of a, of a heat source such as a body. So we noticed that during some of these fires, elderly patients have difficulties trying to escape. And children, most children do escape and to go hide into the, to the, to their closet or under the bed. So during that search, we could use that thermal imaging camera, find that elderly person or that child and, and save them. So those are some of the tools that we would like to, to bring to your attention, some things we want to make sure we have. So, excuse me. One other thing about fighting fires and tools and equipment, some of our fire engines are approaching the 20-year mark. So a lot of these fire engines are in our shop. So our department, we have our own mechanics, they repair our, our fire engines. But when they're out, when they're still under warranty, we have to send them back to the, to the vendor to get replaced. So in order to keep these vehicles out of the shops, we like to purchase more vehicles, not just additional engine companies, but truck companies and paramedic squads. Thank you. That's my partner there. So during, when we're battling these major disasters, like I mentioned, the, the safety equipment, the communications, and the, the tools are things that we want to make sure that we bring to your attention, that we want to upgrade. So during, once again, during a fast-moving brush fire, there's many different agencies coming in to assist, or we're going to assist them. We want to make sure we can communicate. Because if, if you can't communicate, then somebody's going to be, put themselves in danger. So some of the challenges that we're having today is, it's been more than 20 years since we've had a local funding measure. So, so we're working with the board of supervisors and with the local community to see what, what's important to you. And they can decide on, on what, how we're going to go about coming up with a funding measure. So we don't know what the, what the price looks like, but we know some things that we want to improve on. That's make, make sure that we improve our technology, our, our infrastructure, we get more personnel, more fire, more firefighters on the fire engines, better equipment, and new mapping technology to help, to help firefighters get to certain locations. So when, let's just say 11 and 12 go to a fire, let's just say on the other side, there's other units that are coming into Altadena to respond to emergencies. So upgraded mapping equipment would be, would enhance and make sure that they can respond quicker. So yes, everybody uses Google Maps, but our system is a little different than Google Maps, so I've had that question. So, well, there they are, they're going right now. So, and once again, firefighters, we'd like to bring to your attention that you have a total of nine firefighters in Altadena. Well, let's say, I'll say 11. I'm counting myself too, because I'm, I live in Altadena also, along with the battalion chief. So in any type of major emergency, that's when they're all going to get together and, and tend to the emergency. So those survey cards in front of you talk about some of the things that I just mentioned about what's important to you. So if, if you wouldn't mind, just fill in the survey card out and I'll have Aubrey, she can pick it up, or you can tell your neighbors who go online to fill out the survey card to let us know what's important to you, so.
So the website is wearela countyfire.org. And so that, that is open to the community. We're really trying to get as many people's voices as possible heard. If you want to fill out, if you want to fill out the survey card, I'm happy to collect them. Otherwise, you can also put it online on the survey. Just a quick note, the surveys are double-sided. And there is nowhere to mail them, so if you can just hand them back to me, otherwise do them online. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
But the, are there any questions at all? I'm sure there's some.
Starting that way, Councilmember Simmons?
So are you, are you looking for a ballot measure? Or are you looking for a board of supervisors to, to move for funding?
Yeah.
What's the, yes.
So, so, yes, yes.
Only above, right?
So the board of supervisors are probably going to point us in that direction. So there, that's who's going to approve whatever funding measure is going to take place. So a ballot measure is one of the considerations, but right now, we, we still don't know. We're still doing our surveys to find out.
You said the last ballot measure?
Was 20 years ago.
Specifically was pointed at LA County Fire?
It was that, yeah, 20 years ago. So that was for fire and safety equipment. So, and that's, a lot of our money comes from property tax, was $68.80 per house, per single-family dwelling. And it, that number varies depending on what other occupants you have, commercial buildings. So.
That's annually, correct?
I'm sorry?
Annually, $68 annually.
Correct, annually. I'm sorry, did I say monthly?
No, I, I don't think you stated, I just want to clarify.
Under your breath, you said that's what you want.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, next question, Councilmember Vega?
So the best way we can help you is to really spread the word about the survey?
Yes. Perfect, that was easy.
Councilmember Sullivan?
You know, it's, it's interesting when you talk about what things were like, because we tend to forget, yes, everything, a lot of things need updating now.
Yes.
But we kind of forget even what we have now is such a miracle when it, no. When we started to get, I remember when all of a sudden, paramedics were being, you know, all, we were hearing about them. And that was very exciting to get started. But the only question that I've got, now this is online and I found at least where it was. How long is it going to be online?
That's a great question. Aubrey?
Uh, I'm not sure. I know it's for the next couple of months until the board of supervisors figures out if our measure will be, or if it's worded like, so I'd say at least until whenever.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is that, you know, we have enough information here to spread out to our residents. And it's very helpful, especially if they're going to do it online, let them know by X date, please.
Okay, we can try and.
Let's just say by the end of October or something. We give them six weeks or whatever to do. Yeah, let's just.
And if we need more survey cards, I can make sure to have the local station drop some off here where we need to.
Yeah, we should have some in the community center for people to come in on other events as well.
Excellent.
Councilmember Markson?
I just had a quick question. So is one of the supervisors leading this that you will go to? Or will you, will you be talking to Supervisor Barker? How, how does that work?
So Supervisor Barker is aware of this, and I think all those supervisors are, are aware. So in each of the five supervisory districts, there's an assistant chief going out, spreading the word, just like I'm doing today.
I kind of wish this asked me what district I was in. FYI.
Yes, and supervisors are aware that if Supervisor Barker are in line, we might especially want to meet him, because my chief said they are all aware.
Okay, okay. But Catherine Barker is?
Yes.
Part of the? Okay, all right, good.
Any other questions? Councilmember Simmons?
I would like to make a motion that we, as a council, draft a letter to Supervisor Barker's office in support of the survey, the goals of the survey, and, you know, getting a, getting something going in terms of establishing a ballot measure.
Well, you're welcome to put a motion on the table. So are you making a motion?
I am, so moved.
Okay, so moved. Anyone want to second that motion? Okay? You want to take a vote on that motion?
Yeah, is there any discussion first?
Any discussion before we make, take a vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. No abstentions? So moved? Okay?
Who's going to draft it?
Yes, so who's going to draft the letter?
Jeff.
Jeff, you'll do it, okay.
Does the Sheriff's Department or CHP have the Jaws of Life? Just out of curiosity?
No, not, not, no, not that I'm aware of.
No?
No.
Oh, okay. We got to get them.
Yeah.
No, they, we can, we'll help them. So.
I had a question. Did you say that there's nine firefighters?
For all of Altadena?
Yeah, per day.
Per day.
So you have, you have five at.
Five on, nine on duty, right?
Yeah, nine on duty. So you have, I'm just talking about Station 11 and 12. Station 11, you have five, at Station 12, you have four.
Okay.
Station 11 is where and 12 is where?
Uh, Station 11 is right down the street here.
Oh, okay, and?
Station 12 is on Lincoln.
So in terms.
What about the one in Eden Canyon?
Oh, I'm sorry, Eden Canyon, is that, is that Altadena too? That's Pasadena side, but, yeah, okay, so now it's, it's 12.
It's county.
Yeah, it's still the county. Yeah.
That's the one that comes to my house.
Okay, all right, so.
Stop it.
Once again, once again.
Take it easy over there.
Yeah.
So, so the nine is.
I'm just saying, that, they respond to eastern part of Altadena.
Correct, you're, you're absolutely correct. But the two stations that are in Altadena, 11 and 12, and 66 also respond. So it's another three firefighters there every day. So you have a total of 12 in, I guess, Altadena proper, I guess, when you call it.
If, going on, following on to that question of Councilmember Markson, so if that's the case, if a fire takes place in east Altadena, in the area with the Pasadena zip code, but it is county and Al, and is actual Altadena. Fire Station 11 will not respond. It will come under contract from a Pasadena fire station into Altadena.
So, so, so no. So if there's a, a house fire in Eden Canyon, so not only is Station 11 and 12 going to go, but you are going to have a resource coming from Pasadena, along with the resources coming from, from La Cañada to assist. So we'll have a minimum of five fire engines and one, one truck that's going to be coming. So, and their response time is probably seven, seven, eight minutes. Lights and sirens, as long as everybody pulls over properly, we're, we're good.
So you'll have more than one fire, fire engine at your house from two different directions?
I had a follow-up.
I did, I, I just, yeah, okay. That, we have Pasadena zip codes, but none of us are in Pasadena. We're not in the city limits. Eden Canyon's not in the city, city limits.
Correct.
The, Kinaloa Mesa is really all up in there is where that fire station is. That's not within the city limits of Pasadena. So you can call it Pasadena, but.
It's, it's county.
Yeah.
It's county, yeah.
Okay.
I'm the same way. So I have a Pasadena address, but I'm right smack dab in Altadena.
Are you in my, my, are you, are you, are you in my, Sylvia and I's? You must live, you must live in our city.
91104.
That's right.
We're there, we're neighbors.
Tell us where you live and we'll take care of you.
Be careful.
Because then you can come and, and take care of my fire.
Now you know who to complain to, too.
That's right, that's right. No, that's okay. We're happy to help you with anything that you need from a county perspective, as a resident, not as a fireman.
We do appreciate that.
And, and especially in the 91104, 04 area code, because there's always a lot of confusion on who services those areas. And so any way we can help whatsoever to help straighten out those confusions, always happy to do.
I fondly call it Bahadina.
Bah?
Bahadina.
Bahadina, okay.
Because we're kind of down at the bottom and below Altadena and everybody, nobody thinks we're part of Altadena, but we are.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons?
Actually, I forgot to my question, but. So in terms of nine firefighters per 40, 43,000 people, is there like a ratio? Is that, does that really, because that sounds like a lot. It doesn't sound like enough staff to appropriately respond to any calls. Because I know in healthcare, they judge a ra, there's a ratio of doctors per 1,000 population.
Correct.
So I don't know if, and, you know, for first responders, there's like a ratio for that.
So, so I think.
Or if there is an appropriate level.
With, with 200 calls here per month, you, you're not, I think you have plenty of resources here. I mean, if it were to increase, then I think the, the department, along with the council and the supervisor, would definitely look at, add another piece of equipment here to, to, to help out with that amount of medical calls. But although 290-plus medical calls are a lot for, for two stations, actually three stations, but it, it, there are some areas in, in my district that are much busier with, with just the, with one station.
And does the county have some kind of, you know, regulation where it says that there has to be at least one firefighter per, you know, 10,000?
Isn't that difficult for our area? Because we're also a lot of brush and far, on the forest edge. I mean, so we're dealing with things that other incorporated areas that may be in a city, or the ratios can't be comparative, I would imagine. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I would think that, I, I don't have the answer to that question, but I can get it for you.
Right, I was just curious, like if, if it, like in order to have an appropriate amount of staff, there had to be per 800 people, one firefighter or something, I don't know.
So I think it's, yeah, I can get that answer for you.
I guess another way to ask, to ask the question is, how often do you have to invoke a mutual aid call because all of the local equipment is committed for another, for another call?
If there's a, if there's a major brush fire that's happening in Eden Canyon or above Altadena, then we respond to another resource, but.
Thinking more in terms of, you know, residential calls.
Residential calls, so.[1765.81] Residential calls, so-
Where they've saturated local resources and you have to, have to draw in from, from Pasadena or whatever.
So, so how the medical calls work, if we get a, a bunch of medical calls that are coming in at once, the firefight, the fire engine and the paramedic will get there, and if it's just a BLS call, we'll release the paramedic unit to go to another emergency, so they can handle it with just the engine company. So that's going to cut another, release a, another ALS unit to go to, respond to another medical emergency with another unit. And if it keeps becoming even more busy, we'll bring up another resource from, from either La Cañada or in Temple City. That'll be our next in, uh, third in paramedic.
You'll draw another county before you draw Pasadena?
Correct.
I, I'm going to have to say that we're running very short of time, and we still have people making reports. So I'll do one more question, I know Councilmember Wilkins was, uh, ready to ask one.
That's alright.
Are you sure? Okay, alright.
Okay, and I'll get that question for you, hopefully by, uh, for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, community reports. The Altadena, uh, LA County Department of Parks and Rec, Sam Estrada.
Hello, good evening. I'll make this quick. We do have a lot of programs that are coming up for Loma Alta Park. Currently, we're doing our youth flag football program that is taking ages three to eight years old. And we are, the season does start on the Saturday, however, we still are taking enrollment to continue to fill the teams. Our cheer program is starting up, which is across the Los Angeles County. So the enrollment for the program is forty dollars, it's, excuse me, forty dollars for ages four to seventeen. This, again, is a countywide program that we do all the way from Antelope Valley to Santa Clarita, and also in conjunction with Balden Park in East LA. So it's a great event for girls and boys to take part of, and it is, um, going to start in September, and it goes all the way through January. Uh, we have a soccer program that's going to be starting up at Loma Alta as well, and it's going to be September 23rd. And it's, again, for ages three to eight years old, and it's sixty-five dollars, and you can register at Loma Alta Park. Our teen program is our spot program in, in collaboration with LA County Public Health. And the, our spot program basically is for teens, and we do a lot of mentorship, we do a lot of, um, education activities with them. And right now, we're in our after-school phase with the program, so they meet during the week. And they meet Monday through Thursday from after-school, so whenever they get out of high school or middle school till 7:00 PM, and then on Fridays, they meet until 8:00 PM. So it's a great program that we've been doing since last, since this past summer. Again, that's a program that's also run all throughout the county of Los Angeles. We have our Girls Empowerment Program that's going to be on October 5th, and we're doing this at the East LA College. It is a free program that girls can sign up, and it's for ages eleven to eighteen years old. The form I have here today doesn't have the QR code, but if you do want to register, you can register on, uh, online. And all you got to do is just scan the code, and then they can register online. We are taking a bus that is provided by the fifth district supervisor, and she will be providing the bus to take the kids to the conference and back to Loma Alta. So if you do want more information of that, I will be sending this flyer out, I'll be sending it out tomorrow, because we just got the revised one with the QR code. We are also doing a Heald Bay Beach cleanup, and that event is going to be this Saturday. And it's going to be a free bus that's going to pick up at Loma Alta, and they're going to pick up the, the, it could be kids and parents, it doesn't matter, um, and they're going to, the bus will be picking up at 7:45, and then they'll be returning back by one o'clock to Loma Alta Park. This is in collaboration with our LA County Beaches and Harbor. It's also a good way, if you know anybody that needs to do community service, so they could be signed off by the park. And it's a free bus, there won't be any food included because it is such a short span, but it's a great thing to do. They have beach cleanup, games and prizes, arts and crafts and giveaways. And it's going to be at Doc Wyler Youth Center, that's where they're going to meet up. So it'll be Doc Wyler Youth Center, Saturday, September 21st, and the event takes place from nine to 12 o'clock. So I will also be sending that out, again, along with my other information. Also, we are doing our after-school program at Loma Alta, and it is a continuous enrollment. So it is for youth in first grade all the way up to seventh grade. So if anybody's interested, they meet Monday through Fridays from 1:30 to 6:00, and, I'm sorry, Monday's 1:30 to 6:00, and Tuesday through Friday from 2:00 to 6:00. Just an update about Farnsworth Park, they also are doing an after-school program as well, it's Monday through Friday. And they are also taking enrollment, and they have, their program runs two to six, and they also have the enrollment of thirty-five dollars for the after-school program. Our tennis courts are at near completion. I didn't want to give an exact date of when they were going to be, but they are going to be pretty much completed, I would say, by the end of this month. The court is pretty much a hundred percent complete. I was just up there this morning, and actually, before I came to this meeting, we have the lights that have been installed. They're new LED lights. On the east end, the west end, we did have an issue, but that is going to be corrected by the end of next week. We also have the, um, the court itself, nets were installed, and the pickleball lines were installed. The court, you can see it now, you can't walk on it, but you can check it out if you pass by. And we should, like I said, be up and running by, uh, the beginning of October.
Thank you. Quick questions? We are, just to let everyone know, we are, we are running really low, uh, low on time because we're running over. So if you have things to say, try and summarize as quickly as possible, and the reports as well, if you can.
At the town hall, at the town hall on Saturday, a question was posed as to whether there were any plans for any improvements at Charles White Park, to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge right now, I know that there has been some community request about it, but I will have to send that up through my chain.
Could you give us an update on that next month? If you find that information out, and then bring it up to your next month's report?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I do apologize, but if you, you know, if you can, if you're able to summarize, it will be helpful. So moving on to Councilmember Jones with the Community Chamber of Commerce.
The chamber is getting really busy, there, it's that time of the year for Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year. The paperwork is due in November 11th, we already got one in, and the applications just went out for Business of the Year. So, and they're on the website, you can download them. September 26th, there's a mixer at Monty Cedro? Cedro, Monty Cedro, um, from five to seven, and it's free for members and five dollars for-
Non-members.
Non-members. So that's, and then on October 16th, Power Breakfast with Chris Holden.
I have a quick question, because I know, I, I just not aware right now, but they typically, sometimes in the past, we've offered a 10% discount for membership if you join on the day of an event, like the Power Breakfast or Monty Cedro. Is that still going or not?
I will pose that to Doug.
Because, because including the five dollars, she was putting, but, but it's a good opportunity for male members to, yeah.
And if your membership isn't up to date, good time to pay it.
Yeah.
The Power Breakfast is where?
Uh, it's at the Altadena Country Club.
Okay.
Eight to ten.
Is that it? Thank you. Moving on, 6.3 Collaborate Pasadena, Councilmember Sunika.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The collaborate, I'm, he's passing the, uh, report. I'm going to be short and quick. The Collaborate Pasadena meeting, I mean, Leadership Council meeting was held on August 28th at Pacific Oaks College. We, um, basically had an information update, power, the math power hour, student success workshop, scope of attendance issues, and then secondary student attendance. The math, I just wanted to say that the math power hour is a, um, it's created by the African-American Parent Council, and in conjunction with the Pasadena Unified School District, the United Teachers of Pasadena, Reading Partners, and Pacific Oaks College. And what they're doing is something similar to Reading Partners, but they're focusing on math. And we're looking for volunteers to come in and sit with the students to, and help them with basic math. And the majority of the meeting was actually dedicated to the 2020 census. Michelle Ferrera, she's the Director of the Pasadena Library, and she's also the chairperson of the Complete Count Committee. And she gave a very informative, um, PowerPoint presentation. I actually wanted her to come down and talk with Altadena, but she told me that somebody from the county was trying to get in contact with the, with the Executive Committee to come and give a presentation.
Just an update on that, too, Michelle's partner from the city, Justine, I can't remember her last name.
Justine Chan.
She was at the town hall on Saturday introducing herself to councilmembers.
Okay.
So we have met her, and she's introduced herself and given us information already from Saturday.
Alright.
NVBA is also heading up an effort about the census, so, I think, right? No, oh, never mind.
So they were telling us-
Voting only? I thought you were doing, yeah, okay.
They were telling us, every chance we get, we should try to get this information about the census out. It takes place every ten years, uh, this is the first time the census is going to be taken online. April 1st is Census Day, there's going to be some postcards sent out March the 12th through the 20th, and there'll be three mailing reminders, and then, um, around the end of April, they're going to be, um, going house, house, doing house visits, and they're going to open through July. There's only ten questions, there's no citizenship questions being asked. And then they were saying that at stake, there's seventy-seven billion dollars for California, and eighteen million for Pasadena social services and housing. And that, uh, also, if we don't give a correct or an accurate count, it could affect congressional seats, and also, um, the districts could be redrawn. And on the, the Complete Count Committee, they're trying to really go into the northwest section of Pasadena to get the heart, the count people, like, children, young men, renters, and people of color. And, um, the access, also, some people may be challenged because of the online access this time. And, um, there is the Complete Count Committee that is meeting. If somebody wants to join that meeting, you, we can contact, um, Michelle at the, at the Pasadena Library. And the, the library is going to be a hub for people to go in, if you don't have your own computer, to go, uh, go in and, and do the census. And with that, there's no questions? That's the end of my presentation.
I just have a really quick question, you said that the math thing is at six schools, are those, are any of those schools in Altadena?
They're Altadena schools. They are the, the Altadena schools. We had like three, um-
Altadena PUSD schools or Altadena charter schools?
Well, as far, from what I understand, let me see what I have here.
We don't have six PUSDs in Altadena.
They just said, she just said six PU.
We have five, we have five PUSDs.
But my, you can answer me later.
I can find that out, yeah, I can find that out.
If you can let me know, that'd be great.
Because, um, one of the, um, members of this committee is from Altadena, so I just assumed she was focusing on at least the Altadena schools, but I'll get back, get that information for you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, 6.4 NVBA, John?
Thank you.
Sorry to keep everybody waiting and-
Absolutely, I'm falling asleep. Thank you very much for allowing me to have a moment. NVBA is doing a few exciting things that I want to share as quickly as possible. One, this Saturday, we have a meeting, and we are going to, I'm sure that all of you know that our voting system is going through dramatic and unique changes. So we have somebody, um, from our register, strar, recorder clerk office, that is going to be coming to our meeting and giving us information about that voting system. It is going to be in place in March for the primary, and it's kind of exciting that we have a March primary. Anyway, so it's something that I really encourage everybody to come find out about, um, and be an expert so that you can help everybody else in town to know about it. Then our next meeting in October is going to be on climate change. We're pulling together all of the organizations that are touching on climate change in Altadena, which is ten in Altadena. And we're, so we are inviting, I don't know if they'll all come, but we're inviting all of them to come and talk about climate change, what they're doing, how they can work together, how we can work with them, and everybody can participate. The third exciting thing that we're working on, which, um, we've been working on for a long time, so I know you've heard us talk about it, is a newspaper for Altadena. There are four of us that have been very active. Karen, myself, and Val, and, um, Michelle have all been, um, meeting with newspapers all over the area. I think we've met with, what, about five of them, Karen, um, so far, and it's been, we've really educated ourselves. It's been fascinating to find out what it takes to get a newspaper going, what we need to do to have something in Altadena. We've been invited to be part, you know, of other people's newspapers, but that would not give Altadena a voice. That would not really help us to help the town council to really let the town know what they're doing, what the people who come to the town council are doing, and what the real issues facing the town are. So it's something that we continue to work on, just as an update. We are at a place where if we're ready to hear from patrons who want to really help make this happen, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 6.5 Altadena Library Cindy Cleary.
Terry.
Terry Cleary, sorry.
Terry Anderson.
Terry Anderson. Yes, you don't look like a Cindy, I'm sorry.
Again, it's just me, I'm not, I'm not Cindy, obviously.
Yes.
So Terry Andrews, Board Trustees, Altadena Library. And with just a few quick announcements. First of all, I'd like to begin with a thank you to the town council for hosting that Saturday meeting with Catherine Barker and Senator Portantino, that was very enlightening, so thanks for that. You will have heard from, at the last meeting, from Katie Clark, my fellow trustee, about some of the things that are happening at the library. And the thing that's most important to us right now is the strategic planning process that we're going through. And I think you know, just by way of reminder, that there is a special coffee that we're putting on just for the town council members, and that will be on the 19th from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, because we'd really like to get your input into that, into that strategic planning process.
Yeah, that's this Thursday before, before Coffee with the Captain, I did send that out, so you should, should have it in your email. But it's the same day as Coffee, Coffee with the Captain, and it's prior, so you can go from one, get your coffee, and then run over to the next.
It would be 3:00 to 5:00, and yeah, it doesn't bump into the Coffee with the Captain event. If you can't make it, there's an alternative for you, and that is that you can get onto our website, which is altadenalibrary.org backslash strategic planning, and you can take the survey online as well, although we would love to see you at the event. And we do plan to unveil the strategic plan on November the 4th at 6:30 at a town meeting, we'll have it done by then. The second announcement is Taste of Dina, which is our annual fundraiser, put on by the Altadena Library Foundation, will be on September the 28th from 7:00 to 9:30. It's called the Magical World of Books, and it will have magical performances, and it'll have wine and food tastings from area restaurants, it'll have a silent auction, all kinds of great things. And if you haven't been to one before, this is a good year to come to it. The tickets, as I may have mentioned, start as low as fifty dollars each, and there are discounts for multiple purchases and so on. We rebooted our second Saturday concert series, it was more of them there for a couple of months. We had a terrific outing just this last Saturday, we had a salsa band come, we had 230 people show up for the concert, so it's really growing in popularity. And our next one is on October the 12th at 6:30, and the band is Upstream. It's one of the best reggae bands in Southern California, so it would really be worth it for you to show up for that. And then September is Library Card Signup Month. So I think I gave this announcement about a year ago, because I remember this one. So it gives everybody access, of course, to the Altadena Library catalog. And a surprise to me is that there are literally millions of digital offerings that are available on our system now. I didn't know it had grown to that many, so we really got a lot to offer just in terms of signouts. If you don't have a library card, which I doubt is the case with the town council, please sign up for that. Do you have any questions?
I want to take a sales for Taste of Dina.
I'm going to get a report on that tomorrow, because the foundation meeting is happening tomorrow night, yeah. Alright, thank you.
That's it, uh, we're going to move on, but we do have some public comments, so I, I do apologize to everybody. This is the last part of the, the, uh, meeting. I have, do have one amount announcement about Akona, do you want to do that right now?
Yeah.
And we'll do public comments.
The Akona meeting is a week from tonight, um, at 7:00 PM. And the reason I'm mentioning it is because the regional planning folks, who are the folks that you would call if you have a-
that you would call if you have a, a house in your neighborhood that is, has a front lawn that's just solid weeds and weed seeds and all of that, or if you have somebody that has a whole bunch of dead cars in their driveway, or it's the property rehab group, and they're going to be there to answer questions and talk to you about that. So it's, I'm really encouraging everybody, this is the way you can help your own neighborhood, your own neighbors and, or yourself. And so I'm really encouraging people to go to that meeting this, next, next Tuesday at 7:00.
Okay. If you can make it, please go. Okay. Moving on to public comments. The first one is Jim.
Shate.
Shate? Okay. And thank you for your patience, everybody. It's been a long evening.
Hi, councilmembers. My name is Jim Shate. I'm a homeowner in Altadena. My concern is, well, let me start with this. Back in 2016, Measure Ace was passed and, which brought forth hundreds of millions of dollars every year to address the homeless population. Approximately 40 cities thus far have put in for funding for this. On that list, I know Altadena is not one of them. I'm not sure if that's because we're not incorporated. But is the town council doing something currently with Catherine Barger to acquire some of this funding to address this issue, so we could start housing some people? Because we have homeless throughout Altadena, whether they're sleeping alongside of buildings and doorways, up in the foothills here, that need our help. Because for me, I believe, given the right circumstances, any one of us could be on the streets ourselves. So my question to you is, is something being done?
During public comments, as everyone knows here, we don't respond to public comments. You can speak to your council rep, senator afterwards, or you can wait afterwards, we can poke directly. I will say that from the town hall meeting on Saturday, Catherine Barger, that's her passion. She's talked, spoke a lot about at the town hall meeting on Saturday, especially to do, dealing with the homeless. And she's on top of, she, she, her office is, is actually been at the forefront of a lot of changes that's happening right now and along with the state. But if you'd like to speak to any member afterwards, feel free to stay a little bit longer. We're almost done, and you're happy to talk to everyone on a one-to-one basis as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, moving on.
Ann Coleman.
I recognize that name.
Yes.
Good evening, visiting town councilmembers. I just wanted to let you know that this Thursday, two days from tonight, there will be a Third Thursday Program. Altadena Heritage has invited Sean Mas, Maya Stretti, and Lee Adams to present on regenerative landscapes mitigating the urban heat island effect. And this will be kind of a seminar on gardening practices that will take carbon out of the air, help fight climate change, and if enough people do this, lower our temperatures. Thank you. Hope to see you Thursday.
Where is it?
Thursday here, 7:00 p.m.
If you're not a Coffee with the Captain or just leaving the library.
Our event would be great.
Thank you. Okay.
Eugene Hutchins.
Good evening, town council. I'm Eugene Hutchins. 2020 marks the 10-year anniversary of the passing of Lieutenant O. Oliver Goodell. He lived in the house I currently reside in for more than 50 years. Over the course of his life, Lieutenant Goodell made a powerful impact in his adopted community of Altadena, in addition to contributing to the elevated, elevating the dignity and civil rights of African-Americans in this country. As a WWII officer and Tuskegee Airman, Lieutenant Goodell joined his fellow officers by participating in the Freeman Field Mutiny. This was a series of incidents at Freeman Army Airfield, a U.S. Army Air Corps base near Seymour, Indiana, in 1945, in which African-Americans of the 477th Bombardment Group attempted to integrate an all-white officers' club. In conjunction with Black History Month, a group of local residents under the name the Oliver Goodell Project will be honoring and paying tribute to Lieutenant Goodell and the Tuskegee Airman with a permanent plaque on my private property of his former residence. This event will feature speakers, live music, food and drink to mark this occasion. This will be Sunday, February 16th at 2:00 p.m. The Oliver Goodell Project is beginning to garner great interest from a variety of local Altadena organizations. We hope you all commit to being supporters of this project coming up in the future. Among potential local organizations that are beginning to show, show interest in this project are the Rotary, Altadena Heritage, Katie Clark of the Altadena Library Board of Trustees, the African-American Museum of Beginnings in Pomona, the Tuskegee Airman L.A. Chapter, and already Altadena Community Chest has already committed to making a contribution to this project.
That, that's a two-minute, so if you, if you have a couple of seconds to round it up, that's your two, the two-minute time.
Sure. So today I'm here to simply inform the full council of this event and encourage your support to attend, particularly our representatives in that, our Census Track 4603.02.
Thank you.
Okay. If the Census Track rep, if you want, want to stay afterwards and then speak to Census Track reps for that area, they're probably happy to. Gloria, can you spend a minute after? Okay. Thank you. Okay, very last one.
Joy Waters.
Joy Waters.
Or Walters.
They are in the orders I received, and I do apologize for the wait for everybody. It's been a long evening.
Hi, I'm Joy Walters, and I am a facilitator for the grassroots group of Altadena for Clean and Healthy Air, known as CHA-CHA, being redundant. We, in partnership with Altadena Heritage, Altadena Library Safe Streets, are hosting Altadena Clean Air Day Celebration Family Fair, October 5th from 4:00 to 6:00. We invite you, you have a flyer on your desk, and we invite all of the community to learn how to help clean the air. There'll be demonstrations, presentations from vendors, nonprofits, and governmental agencies. There will be raffle and prizes and refreshments. If you're into food, you can come. We urge everyone to take the Clean Air Pledge at CleanAirDay.org. And if any of you had questions afterwards, you wanted to talk to me, I'll hang around because I know you don't take questions now. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for public comments. We have...
There's one more.
One more public comment?
Yeah.
Do we have a?
One more.
No.
Oh.
There's comment cards at the back. We need the information with the Census Track. Just be quick at the back, yeah. And in the meantime, why don't we do the Census Reports while she's filling that out and then pass it to Councilmember Napolene. So we do a Census Track report for 4610, item 8.1.
Well, I don't think we need to do one because she's going to speak for it. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Just a little update on the Lincoln Development. We got in contact with Kerry Jenkins, and he updated us that they have narrowed down the search to two developers.
And they're sending the report out.
Yeah, and they're going to be sending the, the report out. I mean, we already sent out the community input, and they have narrowed it down to two developers, and they're going to be selecting it within the next two weeks.
Excellent. Thank you. And then the last public, one more public comment, and then we got item...
Dorothy.
Dorothy. Councilmember, well, okay. So we'll let you do the, okay, go ahead. Same rules applied. You have two minutes, and then we'll be timed.
Okay, perfect.
And if it's anything in particular, you can wait to the end and then speak to your council rep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, and my apologies for not following the protocol. It's my first time. So I'm, I'm here, I'm Daria Tapousis. I'm from the Altadena Historical Society Board. At the end of August, we had a, an event that we partnered with the town council, in particular Veronica Jones, Antonio Becerra, Dorothy Wong, and with the Library Board of Trustees, Katie Clark, to put together an event called Hidden Voices. And this was a way for us to tell some of the history that we don't always hear in Altadena. So we had three speakers, a couple of Japanese-American people who had been interned in World War II, family members of Bob Lucas, and a woman who was the first Mexican-American, her family was the first Mexican-American to own their property on their block. So we, it was a huge turnout. We had about 150 people there. It was a really successful event, so I want to thank the town council. I want to thank the library. I think this was a, a great show of how a partnership between three organizations in the community can really come together to highlight the diverse community that we have here in Altadena. So thank you.
So if you wanted to speak to me later regarding that, but it, it does sound like it was broader than where you live, and so if you want to speak to the other Census Tracks, yeah, then speak to them.
Really important is that now the library is setting aside funds to keep it going, and we're looking at getting a $10,000 grant.
Oh, that's so awesome.
To keep it going. So just from that Sunday.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last of the Census Track reports is 4603.1, Councilmember Wong.
Hi. So I just wanted to give a, a really fun report and to let you know when the next event is coming up. So on September 15th, this last Sunday, we did a Climate Resilience Classroom Workshop. We had LA County Regional Planning come and speak at Loma Alta Park about their, they're going to be looking to us. They want to know what Altadena is doing as it relates to thinking about the Climate Action Plan. It needs to be updated. So 2020, by the end of 2020, they will be updating their Climate Action Plan. So they really wanted to get to know Altadena. So anything you guys are doing, I can forward you all the information because that will help them shape the Climate Action Plan as it relates to Altadena. So I'll send you information on that. And then the other workshop was the Introduction to Water LA's Big Picture Small Projects, which is a pilot project that Water LA, the River Project, was doing. And Measure W has passed, and we are being taxed now, I think, two cents per square foot for our non-permeable surfaces. So they're having a permeable driveway and permeable workshop, different things you can do on your property to be more permeable.
How do they know if you're not permeable?
Somehow the county looks, I, I don't know. Like I, there is actually a calculator on, online with the county with Measure W, and I typed in my address, and it told me what my increase in property tax was. So I'll, I can send you guys that information. So anyway, Water LA is doing a workshop on the 28th, so waterla.org. You can find out more information. They're free education classes. There's going to be gray water systems coming up also in October, and on and on. So check it out, waterla.org.
Yeah, this is a little deceiving because when you go into it and you look at it, it, it looks like they're going to help you, and they don't really.
I've been going to the workshops.
No, no. I mean, it, I mean, when you go to the website, it looks like the people are going to come to your house and help you.
Well, the pilot project is actually happening. So the projects I've been going to, we've been actually helping install water tanks, and we've been, the community has come together.
I think so, yeah. You have to be part of it.
It's really, oh, no, you can just come and attend. So right now, it's 20 homes, but with Measure W, there's a lot of money out there that we can really be thinking about, and it's just, the doors are just opening, so the more proactive we can be on whatever water resilience is.
But actually, Water LA, they have stipulations because if you don't have a parkway or some other kind of, you, you're not eligible for, to participate.
Well, just to, for the original projects, and then it opened up, and then it's going to open up more. They've just got 20 projects, but they're doing educational seminars through the end of the year and into January with how really we kind of train each other, whatever it is that you want. So a lot of people want to learn about gray water systems and with water resilience. In the future, things have literally just started because Measure W has just started coming around, and I think half of the money, yeah, it's a long story. But anyway, check it out if you want to learn about making your home less non-permeable, Water LA. September 28th. Thank you.
I'm going to make, right now, we're going to, somebody's going to do a motion to adjourn. Could Councilmember Jones, when you mentioned before about your, the update on hidden histories and the grant and stuff, could you give an update that we can post on our website? That would be awesome.
Oh, yeah.
So people can, can see what you've been doing. Awesome, okay. Is there a motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay. We're adjourned.
Everybody help pick up a little...
Yes, we have run over, so if we can all help support each other and, and clean up, yeah. Hi.